This time we'll call to order the Enhill County Board of Commissioners Informing Work Session for November 27, 2018. It's 1:30. And we don't have a work session scheduled for today. We don't have any department updates, but we do have a preliminary consent agenda. And I am wondering if everyone has had a chance to look at all of the items on there? And if you have any questions specifically? Silas is here. If you have any HHS questions.
Ma'am Chair, I looked at all of them very specifically. I would request that item number, the first item I come across, item number two be removed for consideration to our Thursday meeting, please.
Okay.
And then I do have several questions on all the others, but I can get those with Silas. They're a general type contract stuff question, so they're, I don't have problems on these specifically, so.
Okay.
I'll bring those up at a further time.
Now might be in your mind.
No, because I have so many different ones that it's just, yeah, so.
You did?
The others can stay on the consent agenda. Those can stay on the consent agenda.
Okay. So we have, the only other thing I wanted to, and I had, where are we? That's it. So everybody's good with everything on the consent agenda?
Yeah, and that number 14, that block five adjustment, that's just because of those offices?
Correct.
By Order One.
Correct. Yeah. The lot lines are being adjusted, and on that point, it's 621 if these days, not 615. So we'll correct that on the formal agenda for Thursday.
And the Sheriff and the District Attorney are here also, in case there are questions about their items. Anybody have any questions about the Sheriff's Budget, Position Authority, and?
Sheriff, remind me on the additional 2.0 FD, those are additional, those are additional positions, correct?
Yeah, it'd be to accommodate the increase in.
Because of?
On track for the City of Enhill.
City of Enhill, okay. One question I have. And as far as the District Attorney's request, Brad and I had a chance to discuss that quite thoroughly, and I'm in total, I'm in total support for his request.
Okay. Everybody? Commissioner Perezic?
I'm fine.
Again, Commissioner, for item number two, did you have questions for Silas on that item?
I think, I, the only, I have, do have some questions. It's really the reason I want to discuss it in open meeting is I'm concerned with, I brought up previous time about when we purchased both the, the previous building. We signed the contract, and I was very concerned that we had, that the cost would be more than we thought it was, and let me get to my notes here. And looking at the attachment from Integrity Building, I am a little concerned that we started out with an original remodeling cost of $892,000. And since that time, we've done two agreements that add another 100, let me get down here, we've added another 164,000, almost $165,000 in change orders, which brings it up to the cost we know so far, not counting the cost of the building, over a million, almost a million dollars in remodeling. And I'm very concerned about we continue to spend, you know, we get it, we, we look at a building, we see how much the building costs, and then we seem to continue to do a change order after change order before you know it. What I'd really be interested, Silas, what you can maybe help me out on that one, is what the cost with, with the purchase of the building and the remodeling, I'd really be interested to know what the cost per square foot, what we will have after all the remodeling and the purchase of the building, what we will have, what the cost per square foot will be. Because I like to prepare it to new construction and other things.
I'll answer that last, but I can't answer that. I just need a calculator. So, a little bit of context, and as a reminder for the board, the original invitation to bid on this project, when we released it, we had a single bidder that was not a local contractor, and bid the project at $1.3 million. That was per local construction.
Right.
And we delayed our invitation bid. We put it back out, I think maybe four or five months after that, and then had this second bidding process where we selected Integrity to do the work. And then within the, the actual original contracting and timeframe to get the project up and running, we had a delay.
Eleven months.
That was of about 11 months. That was not of our own creation. It was, it had to do with a nonprofit partner who's a close ally of ours, and we contract services with Lutheran Community Services, and that was linked to a remodel that was directly across the board, across the street here, which was delayed significantly and over budget significantly. So within that time period, a portion of the increased cost is linked to the improved economy and the fact that.
Right, I got you.
Materials went up. And it's actually just a minority of the change. Most of the changes, there were three change orders prior to this, and I brought all three just because I thought it might come up. But the first, as a reminder, was a change order that essentially allowed us to put an ADA accessible bathroom into a leased space that we own and we lease to Mr. Beerly. And we did that because it was really going to create a more favorable space for the actual remodel that we were doing, which we had not included in the ITB originally. And I think that is design process, not necessarily contractor issue per se that we would put on the contractor or myself as overall project manager, some sort of oversight. I mean, it's a big project. We hadn't seen the opportunity for the ADA bathroom. We added it in. That was the first change order to that was a $21,000 increase. The second change order they came through was related to the sewer line laterals when we purchased the, what we called the Mercer tax lot. We went through that process with full board participation to acquire the adjacent tax lot, which has a common wall. It made sense in the overall business need of the facility and the proximity to our overall campus. We made the decision, once we purchased it, the city required this additional lateral, lateral line sewer connection because they found ordinance that had not been properly followed years ago, and they held us do that. And instead of fighting it, we, we went along with the city's requirements, and we paid that lateral line hookup for the other tax lot that we didn't buy, because we didn't want to put it on the dentist who owns the other third lot. There's a third lot there. So that was the change order number two. That was for $46,000. The third change order that we did prior to the fourth one that's in front of the board was related to the parking lot and our decision to go ahead and repave the back parking lot. And it really came up to the best time to do that project. It hadn't been in the ITB. It was cracked and chipped. We went ahead and did the project. I talked to the board about why. Again, we have the budget authority. We were under the original $1.3 million that we had done with the other contractor. It wasn't like we would have gotten a radically different invitation to bid outcome had we included that in first scope, and we actually worked with Public Works and John to make sure that we went through and got the best pricing that we could. And when we actually involved Public Works in it, we got a better pricing overall per square foot on the repaving than had we just put it out to bid through our contractor with Integrity. So I felt pretty confident about those three. And then to bring us to the fourth, really, the bulk of the change was the discount pricing of $33,000, because Bruce and Integrity was able to come under his estimate, and he actually applied those net savings on the overall contract of $33,000 in a few places that we had some unintended savings, and I appreciate that he was able to, to give those savings back to the county. The other two increases in this fourth change order are $26,000 roughly. That is the delay of 11 months, where we did have some materials coming in at higher pricing, and I think it would be right action to go ahead and pay at today's pricing as a result of those changes. And then the other $76,000 really were related to some things that we hadn't included in the original ITB, but were changed because of the Mercer acquisition largely. And the one in there that we didn't include, and we knew it at the time, I talked with Shane at IT, and I talked with Joe about it, was the, the low voltage security.
Right.
So that one I knew going in we hadn't included because we hadn't fully conceptualized how we wanted to do it. The rest of them, you can just go line by line, and they're either a very small, you know, made sense to do at the time, or they were related to the acquisition of that Mercer property.
Yeah.
So I, I feel pretty confident that, you know, what we've got with the project, overall quality, the value to the county, and the timeline, once we actually got the building, we're actually a little bit ahead of time in terms of project completion, and we should be in there at the end of December, first week of January.
Yeah, I'm not questioning, questioning that. I just say, as you know me, I have an issue when we keep leasing or purchasing buildings and put more money into than we originally thought we were going to do, much like we did with the Kirby Street building, to the point where we have money tied up into buildings that, to me, would be much better off going into a one capital improvement plan and figuring out what we really need. So that's why I want to put off. But I do have one, and maybe Silas, you can answer this question, one additional question on the change order. I don't think it's normal, and maybe it is for this contractor, that when they, you know, the 11 month delay and the scope of the work that caused this. Normally, when I see the prices like the low voltage, you know, where we did the 40 data drops for 15, 520, normally that includes, you know, the material and the labor, and when I see a specific line item on a bid for additional profit and overhead of $6,100, that concerns certainly why those aren't, whether you pay it or not, why they aren't built right into cost when he's charging us separately for additional profit and overhead. That, that concerns me a little bit, why that kind of line item is in there as listed as a line item. It's like, he's making additional $6,100, and when I add up all of the costs of what was in that work order on that phase of it anyway, and I look at that 6196, I, I just have trouble justifying the additionals. It's almost $6,200 just for his, his profit. But I assume he was making his profit from the contract itself and the work orders itself and not actually adding on additional profit and overhead. But that's just my opinion, so. But anyway, those are, I appreciate Silas, all of your, your explanations, but I still won't get moved to Thursday.
I also didn't answer your question about price per square, but I came up with $2.33.
$2.33 per square foot?
That's the entire building.
And that's considered Class B, that's considered Class B building, I take it? I know it's not a Class A office building. I don't know if it's Class B.
I'm not an expert.
Well, I know, because I like to see compared to new construct. The only reason I want to know is, compared to new construction, is that a dollar lower than new construction? Is it 50 cents higher than new construction for that type of building, to make sure that we're not putting money into where we could have.
Location was a big part of the reason we moved there, being in where it is located.
Well, and I understand.
In conjunction with the rest of the services that Health and Services.
Oh, I don't disagree with that, Commissioner. My problem is, is I don't think we should continue to remodel and purchase and lease buildings downtown without knowing where we're going to go in the future. And I'm just, so I'm against, I'm against putting additional money into buildings in the, here when we don't have any plan where we're going to go in the future. But that's my opinion.
Yeah. And this building is, this is our future. I mean, we've already committed significant dollars, and what you're saying is you want to stop now and not continue to finish this building out so it is functional?
Oh, no. What I'm saying is, two years ago, I was like, and I, I wanted to do a capital plan, so we knew five years down the road where we'd be. We're two years down the road. Now we put more money into more buildings, lease, rental, and everything. And to me, from a capital plan, if, if anybody wants to think our, our future is in downtown, maybe it is. But I don't know that. I don't know what this continues to cost us. So that's, well, no, I'm not necessarily saying that we should stop this project, but I just want to be brought up at the point of need.
Well, I think at this point, I don't know if you could bring us up to speak, Ken, about, this was a project that you had been working on in terms of giving us the lay of the land for future capital projects. We've maybe not had a report out from Ken on this, but this is something that has been in the works for quite a while.
Yeah. I'm taking a window here really quick. You know, just a reminder that as part of the 18, 19 budget process, we did include in the capital plan, doing a space analysis to look at our existing footprint, our existing infrastructure, and also identifying future needs, everything, you know, that we're talking about. Admittedly, you know, at, at what point do we kick that off? It was something that was budgeted to occur this budget year, and it's on the plan. Joe and I have been talking about this and trying to figure out the launching point, but Joe's also trying to get caught up on a number of projects. So, you know, the last analysis that was done was in 2010. There was another one that was done in 2004. You know, so there, there's, there's been some past analysis done, but of course, we are, we're definitely due for new. You know, as far as next steps, one of the things that I was looking at doing, and that's why I'm going back to my notes to refresh my memory a little bit, is the next step is looking at, you know, getting into probably January or February is coming to meeting with the board, because, you know, to put some, you know, parameters around the project, what we're looking at, whether, you know, working with Christian, whether or not we need to do an RFP to find that consultant in line. So that's kind of really quick where we're at. We just haven't been able to get to that project yet, but it is on the list, and thank you for.
Yeah, I think, Ken, you bring up a very good point. I know, you give me a lot of the information. I've needed so far, I've got a lot of information from the assessor. I think this plan also has to include not just what we own and what we're putting into remodeling, but what we lease, what we rent, what's, what's the buildings we own, how much we're losing off the tax rolls because we're not collecting taxes. Because I think myself personally, just the initial stuff that you gave me and what the assessor gave me, work, by staying in a lot of the buildings down here, work costs, and that's a lot of money. But that's just my own opinion, so. And I know probably bringing this up Thursday, you know, that, I'm not going to say I'm going to go for it or against it, but that's why I want to move till Thursday, so.
Yeah, because the one thing that it also has, because we also really need to look at the courthouse, and the one thing that I've missed is we've constantly, you know, we're hearing from the courts as well, that they're looking at expanding, they're looking for an additional courtroom, you know, so there's also those needs, you know, across the street, you know. You know, I kind of throw back to when I first started with the county, you know, most of this block, if not all of this block, was all in the courthouse at that time. And, and so with the expanding needs from the courts, and then with the expanding needs from the county itself, it's, it's grown from there. And, you know, and that, you know, I can't remember which plan, it might have been the '04 plan that contributed to the direction for the acquisition of the, the buildings on this block in particular, to start transitioning, you know, to free up more space for the courts, which now.
And we might, we might as well, I mean, we may turn out, we stay downtown.
Right.
But until we have that analysis done, I'm not going to bet one way or another.
Well, and I think it, I think it would behoove us to take a look at the fact that the people that we serve, in terms of transportation and in terms of where the people that we serve are likely to find the most convenient access to services, is right downtown in the core area. And since they all, if you take a look at where Lutheran is, where Provoking Hope is, where all of these places that have a sort of a nexus for our population with the greatest need, it is in the downtown area, as is access to county offices. And the other thing we have to look at is, it is, I like to look back on what past county financial officers have done, and that is shrewd, a shrewd and, I believe, fiscally responsible approach to county offices and services and buildings, is by not going out for a bond levy to ask people to support an enormous financial burden when we can. Basically, this goes, makes us more nimble. It lets us contract and expand according to what our needs are. And also, we know that we have a recession, another downturn coming according to the State Economist in, starting 19 or 20. So we know if we're going to have a contraction. For us to think in terms of building a monolith, building a big building that we're going to have to finance, that we might not be able to fill should there be a contraction, I know that Silas's programs are, are at the behest of what the state decides to give us. Should some of these funds be retracted or contracted in some way, we have to be able to be nimble enough to say, we've got a three-year lease or a five-year lease. We haven't committed to an enormous building. If you look at Waukegan County, not only spend, but the size of what they have, and, and when they need it, it was great, but now they've got an enormous inventory of, of real estate that they have to support. So I think that it is been a fiscally responsible approach where we can stay. It's kind of like saying, do you build an addition to your house when your mother-in-law is living with you, when it might make more sense to fix up this spare bedroom, because we don't know how long she's going to be with us? So I just think in terms of how we treat our citizens and what we ask them to pay for, this is the more nimble and flexible approach. So, but I think we should talk about this on Thursday.
Yeah, because I, I think I appreciate your comments, Ma'am Chair. I kind of agree. I think it's for our taxpayers who are asked to buy all these buildings and asked to rent these buildings and lease these buildings without knowing if we're doing the right thing. Has anybody ever asked a taxpayer if they would support a law? We don't ask, and we don't know. So I'm just, that until we do some kind of a study, I just, I just have trouble with personally putting money into it. But I appreciate your, your comments.
And I think Ken.
I do want to clarify that every penny that we have spent on any capital acquisition of property in the eight and a half years that I've been the director has been with state, federal, other funds. We have not used any county general funds. So there's no county general fund going into this project either. So we're talking about statutorily restricted healthcare dollars that go for the financing of the services we provide, and in this case, the office space to do so. Currently, we have about 15,000 square feet that we do have out in leased space or office space. That's between Newburgh and McMinnville, and we are, you know, those Christians helped me construct language that does give us the ability to terminate those contracts should we lose grant funding. But the rest of our properties that are proper office space right here in downtown McMinnville, we have, you know, either because we've owned them for a long time, or we've looked at it, it strategically fits with our business need to meet the community need and, and the customers where they're at. In this case, the access points have been right downtown, and that's why this project, we started it two years ago for all those reasons, with the private, you know, the publicly funded dollars that come from out of county. Now they're all tax dollars.
They're all taxpayers' dollars.
But they aren't a county general fund. And so I just want, as you all consider your policy options going forward, which I absolutely support, us having the consultation project, and us having a professional come in and look at all of these different levers and a design for a future, some of that hasn't been happening at the same time that we've had growth within serving the vulnerable populations we serve. And as those funds have come in and the opportunity and the obligation to serve them, we've had to make some of these business moves. So to me, this is completing a project.
Yeah.
That we started two years ago.
Well, and I would also add that that building has always been in the county's sights.
Yeah, just because of proximity.
Correct.
Yeah, and I, you know, and I personally believe, and I appreciate, and this isn't having a thing to do with the programs we run and what we do for ourselves. It doesn't have anything to do with our programs. It's just that, that I just don't believe it's wise to continue renting and leasing high-valued property and buying high property, high property, cost property in downtown McMinnville. That's just, that's just me, so.
So where would you suggest that we build a big building?
Who says we're building a big building? I never, did I ever mention you said big building? I never said big building. Have we ever explored a, a option with the City of McMinnville who is also looking at replacing a lot of space and doing a one governmental center? Have we ever explored that option? No. Have we looked at where we could put a building? No. Who says it? I mean, I couldn't tell you if that building is 100,000 square feet or 200,000 square feet, because we've never done that study. I'm not saying a big monolith of a building, but we don't know. So if you don't know, how can you not say that?
But I'm just thinking in terms of the convenience of the populations that we serve, just as a, for instance, throw out a, for instance, of where we might look for that.
I think we could have easily looked in with the population we serve, with our transit system. There are several places around town we could have looked at. We could have looked at where the, right now, we have leased out for the go-kart track. We could have looked at that area, at the fairgrounds, which we already own the property, but we lease it for the go-kart track. We could have looked at something like Lamont ESD property, where the whole back half of the property is vacant, and it's already got a building sitting on that property. I mean, there's all sorts of places. And Mary, do I know? No, I don't. But that's what a study tells you. And without doing the study, we don't know. That's why I'm so much for the study. But anyway, I don't want to be, you know, I don't want to, because I think they're all, your points are good, Stan's points are all good. I think they're all good points. And, but I just, I just have problems supporting continuing spending.
I, I can just see the City of McMinnville, if the county and city also vacated all the properties that the city and county owns in downtown core. The downtown core would not exist. And a lot of the activity in downtown is, is the result of the services and the buildings that are here that service city and county public services. So I think you have to be careful when you talk about all the city buildings and the county buildings, and all of the stuff we're going to vacate and move them out of the core downtown. What do you want to do to McMinnville?
Well, I can tell you the City Council and the mayor, mayor and the city manager are having these same conversations.
Yeah.
Anyway. Anyway, so that's, that's a.
To be continued.
To be continued. Thanks for the conversation and discussion. Thanks, Silas.
Thank you, Silas. All right. So, so that will take care of, so we have no more items. We're just going to take off two, and we're just going to take item two off?
Yes.
Is that it?
Item two.
That was the only one. Okay, and then we'll, we'll go on for that. Silas, thank you for, for that. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
And then anybody else who wants to leave at this point, thank you for being here. You can stay.
Thank you.
November's almost, you know, almost over, Sharon.
Yes, almost over.
Don't shave it off. It's going to be a cold winter.
Brad? Well, I guess you can shave yours off.
Are you shaving?
Thank you.
You do have one there, don't you?
I'm, I'm going to just, you know, I'll just report, I've been married 28 years, and my wife has never seen me without one. So if I start it now, it could end up a whole different relationship.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
So, non-consent agenda items or other topics for discussion? Let's see, what do we have? A couple of things I wanted to, to bring up. I was hoping that we could get, oh, yeah, all right, I'll get to that for an update. But what I was hoping that we could get to is, back in May, when we had that public hearing on the trail, Mr. Kenwright had offered to handle the maintenance in perpetuity for the trail, and we talked about the ongoing cost of it. I like to think of it as sort of the Yen Hillis Trail on a timeshare. You never know what it's going to cost, and you're paying for it even after you're dead. But, that being said, we never did get an MOU. We never did get any agreement, and I know that you have a relationship.
Madam Chair, I will have that for you next week.
Awesome. Just so we have something to work with.
That's fine.
Okay.
Please, the memorandum of understanding that he and his wife have agreed in perpetuity to take care of the maintenance of the three miles from Carlton to Yamal.
Okay.
That was the statement he made at the hearing.
All right. And then we also need to take a look at what that entails. What does maintenance mean? So I don't know.
According to all the studies that we've done nationwide on trail maintenance, it comes out to between $1,200 and $1,500 per mile per year is what maintenance has averaged on existing rails or trails projects.
And that's about what Brett told me when he was here, when it was around $1,200, $1,500 a mile per year, so.
That's, we've done significant reviews of other trail projects, so that's, and that's what he's committing to is roughly about $4,000 a year for that three miles.
So then can we, would we also put into that MOU, who would be actually doing the maintenance? Would that be something that we're paying another entity to do?
I think that still has yet to be discussed.
That's a separate, really, probably a separate issue.
Part of what the, see, and that's based on actually hiring it out, that 1,200 to $1,500 miles, that's hiring it out. Here, we have the option of utilizing, when we do have prisoner work parties, utilizing that. When Brett was using those for a variety of different aspects. So that could have reduced that, whether we continue that kind of program. The Yam Halus West Side Trail people have offered, have volunteered to provide maintenance services on there. So there's a variety of different things that will drive the actual cost down on that, and putting aside money at the same time for eventually that pavement. Approximately every 10 years, you're probably going to want to do a resurfacing or something. So you're going to start setting money aside for that. But the basic maintenance, he has guaranteed in perpetuity for that three-month stretch.
Okay. Let's see. So we, at the beginning of the year, we all set, as commissioners, we all set personal goals for ourselves and for the work we wanted to do throughout the year. The year is almost coming to a close, and I just wanted to check in with everybody in terms of the goals that you stated for yourself at the beginning of the year and the accomplishments. So Commissioner Olson, I'll start with you.
Well, my goals, I think I, I would have liked to make more progress than I did, but I think learning, my goals for the first year were probably pretty lofty, and learning what I've learned and getting more arrangements, I, I feel satisfied that I've, I've learned what I've learned and I met the goals that I needed.
And what were those goals?
Well, one of them was to understand more about county finance and investment, investment, and how we invest, and where we get our interest from, and the different investment policies. And so that was one of my goals. And another little goal that I had personally was to try to bring the assessors, area, taxation area, and more out of some of the. area, more out of some of the dark ages with the hope that as we go on, since like any other area, it's hard to fill, pay for and fill good appraiser one and appraiser two positions, that hopefully some of the technology we could put in place will alleviate having to, alleviate having to put on additional staff and yet give us the ability to better assess all of our property on a more regular basis, since we have some rural properties that hadn't been assessed in over twenty years. And I've been very pleased with that. So those, those are my really two main ones, so.
Okay, Commissioner, press a question.
I have a variety of goals. Economic development was one, and as you're aware, we did set about to define how we're going to approach that and did get Setcore on board. And that just came from a meeting in Newburgh on the Economic Development Advisory Committee that has been structured. And will also be the, a piece of that committee will be doing the grant reviews and bringing recommendations to this board for approval. That's something we've worked on. Newburgh-Dundee bypass is something I've been very heavily involved in. In fact, just had another meeting last two weeks ago with Tammy Beatty and Eugene, making her aware that she'll still see my smiling face at OTC meetings, because that needs, I really want her to be aware of how critical that is to economic development for Yang Hill County. So continuing to press on that issue. We have come a long way, but we've got some giant steps. We've got it down to one hundred and fifty-two million, so we're, we're working, we're getting closer. That was the Yang Hill's West Sider Trail, but you're so excited to get it done, Commissioner.
Yeah, she had Maggie, because it isn't in yet.
It's approximately the twentieth of this month, we'll get a ruling from LUPA on our findings. And I'm, I feel very confident that there might be one or two small things, adjustments they'll want us to make, but for the most part, I think our findings are going to come through and will give us the green light then to start moving forward with the bridge work out there at the other end. And I can start pushing real hard with, again, ODOT with Jenna, because the safer is to schools piece, from where it terminates at two forty, the three-mile stretch, getting from there down to the school will require some kind of a pathway. And in talking with Jenna at the Department of Transportation, they have money that we could get to develop something from that trail down to the school. So we'll be working on that, but that's a piece of the overall trail. Workforce development is something I've been very interested in, because again, economic development is tied so closely to transportation. Having a ready workforce, if we can convince somebody to bring their business here, we have to have workforce here for them. In that vein, I served this past couple of years as the chair of the joint, the jobs council with Workforce Partnership. And we've, we've developed a lot of good strategies. When we got Kim in there, Kim Parker, who currently is our executive director, she has really brought some focus to our workforce development. And last year, Yang Hill County was the recipient of four different grants to individual businesses to integrate training into their workforce. And we have another set of, another round that we just put out the RFP on, so people can start requesting opportunity. And those are twelve, fifteen thousand dollar grants to help in training projects within their companies. So we're moving forward with that. And, well, let's see. What else? Old veterans, absolutely. We are, in fact, Mitch and I were talking last week, or two weeks, that's been two weeks, sorry, two weeks. But because we do have a new director, state director, and Mitch is going to continue his position as director of benefits. So I've been working with him to continue, I want to get a closer alliance with Jerry out here and what we're doing here in Yang Hill County. But we've gotten a lot of, really, gotten a lot of our veterans signed up getting benefits because Jerry has been really good about the reach out on that area. We have, our veterans are shrinking because our World War II and Vietnam veterans are unfortunately no longer with us. But we still have thirty-two World War II veterans in Yang Hill County. In fact, one of them was just in the concert, Veterans Sunday, at the Veterans Day concert. One of our horn players is a World War II veteran, and I was giving him a bad time because he came walking in in his Navy uniform. And I said, you should show off.
You fit, you fit in there.
Yeah, because I was in Vietnam, and my uniform won't fit me anymore. And so he took me around the corner, he pointed to this lady, and he says, see her? That's my wife, and she's a seamstress. He told me, told me his secret. So, but yeah, we do have a very strong veterans program here. We've got, like I say, over nine thousand veterans in Yang Hill County. And what people fail to recognize is the economic driver that getting our veterans their benefits is to the county. Last year, or nine, I'm sorry, twenty seventeen, I don't have your numbers for twenty eighteen yet, twenty seventeen, fifty-nine million dollars came into Yang Hill County because of veteran benefits, all levels of veteran benefits. But that's a, that's a big number. And so the more we can do to get the benefits that they've earned to them, the better off the county as a whole is, but especially our veterans. And of course, the homeless issue with veterans is considerable, the number of veterans that end up in our justice system is deplorable, but we got, we have some really good services being brought forward here, so. Anyway, got a couple of things at least started that I was hoping to get done this year.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, I'm just happy to say that today we have the kickoff for our DHS overhaul project, where we're hoping to put together a hybrid of city-county services. We've got the dream team, all of our nonprofits and all of the people who are invested in this, as well as our, our three ladies that we've hired. And we've begun the process. I don't know if you guys got a chance to read Sunday's Oregonian. When people say it's not that bad, I say you're right, it's worse. And we're having, you know, kids dying that there's no reporting on. I found out that there are, the average rate of psychiatric medication for kids in foster care is almost five times higher than it is in the general population. So I'm trying to get numbers on the number of kids in our county who have been put on a number of psychiatric drugs. The average number is four or five. I cannot get that information. We seem to be, we were being told it doesn't exist. I, I have a hard time believing that, but our new dream team says that they're going to get that information. I've issued a five-page request for information from DHS on all of the data about our kids, and it's been largely ignored, so I think-
Kind of like DEQ, huh?
Kind of like, well, way worse than that. And so hopefully, we're going to see with this new project that they know we mean business and that we're here to fix it for our kids. So I'm happy to see that that happened. I'm grateful for the support. Thank you, guys, and thank you to Silas and everybody else in the community. And we're going to be having community meetings all around the county, so that anybody who's involved with foster care will get a chance to weigh in. Also want to say that our emergency alert system, which is something I've been hoping we could, we could get, finally, there has been a bigger push to get people to sign up for it, and I think it's going to be, become more and more important as time goes by. Also, with our foreclosed properties, we just had one that, we finished ink in the deal on the Lafayette property for a housing authority, and we've got a number of other properties Housing Authority is looking at that we have on our rules. We're working with a number of other, right? We've got some people that might actually wind up getting their homes back.
Correct.
But the remainder of them, we're working with Massey and the Housing Authority to see that we can get these into Housing Authority, so they can get them out just for some low-income housing. And also, I'm happy to report, have a bill that Representative Noble is sponsoring, which would allow us to have the opportunity to give back the equity in the homes for foreclosed properties. Whether or not that's going to fly, but I have my fingers crossed. And we also have a DHS goal, which will let everybody use our plan, our template, around the rest of the counties to clean up their, their child welfare system. Okay, I did want to mention that we were all, I think you all got the email from BNRG Renewables, they would like to do a payment in lieu of taxes. It's a solar company. And I wanted to know what you wanted to do, since you did want to address the board. Just sort of a little bit of the backstory. Our assessor says it's never been done before, where we've done that. Where basically, they give us a lump sum of seven grand a year, and that will be an annual payment in lieu of property taxes for up to twenty years. Now, the legislature has provided for this, to give us the authority to enter into this agreement. So we have to decide whether or not we want to do it. So my question to you commissioners is, what is your appetite for putting this, for allowing this to go forward? Do we want to say, yes, he would like to come and talk to us, maybe we could put it on, have him come on a, maybe the, was it the eleventh or the eighteenth?
Next week, next Tuesday would be the eleventh.
So if he came and sort of pitched us on why this might be-
Fourth.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
You're right, thank you.
Okay, we're just a little-
Too eager for Christmas, maybe?
No.
So-
She's anxious to get to the third Christmas.
No.
Sorry, Laura.
Just discombobulated about dates.
So is that something, I know you've had a chance to look at it, are you interested in even considering that? We've never done it before.
I, I would be interested only from the standpoint of finding out what, how the county can benefit, but again, not entering into anything that's going to circumvent our, what we've already decided as far as putting solar arrays on one, two, three, and four properties.
No, this is, this is, they're already, the ones that have been approved, this is to do a sort of a, another payment for-
Right, I, I just want to make sure that I understand and that their understanding of what they're getting and their, our understanding are one and the same.
So-
That was my concern, Commissioner.
But, but I think the two don't have anything to do with each other, because they're already in play. What he's trying to say is, what we're proposing to you is, instead of paying the property taxes for these particular parcels, that we would then get a payment in lieu of that. So they're not, they're not, one has nothing to do with the other, other than the, the fee that we would get. So that's what we have to decide.
And I asked Derek to take a look at the company's computations and give us some feedback. So what you could do is, if you want to hear from Mr. Connolly next week, in the meantime, we could have Derek put together some information for you that you could digest after you hear from Mr. Connolly.
I will be a bit formal next week, that's what you can talk to him about. So eleventh, I, I'd like to hear, I'd really like to hear.
Or you could have him come next Thursday, catch your forum session.
Because I'd like to see what, with, after Derek works up his levers, I'd like to see what that difference, what that difference is.
So Thursday, I would suggest, because you're probably only going to have three meetings between now and the end of the year, and it has to be done by the end of the calendar year, if you were going to approve it.
Well, that's, that's the request he's made.
Yes.
Right?
But don't we have, don't we have only until the end of the-
For it to be effective the next, for the next year.
Okay.
And that's what he's asked, is the board to consider it?
Correct.
This did come before the board, well, a similar request was made by another solar operator, several years ago, and the board at that time decided not to move forward with the program. But we'll pull those materials up as well, if anyone wants to, to see that.
Okay. So do we want to maybe ask him to come on the, would that be the fourth, the eleventh? No, the-
Thursday would be the sixth.
Because I have to have Diana set to Dr. Slippor on the sixth.
And you have a public hearing on the sixth, don't you?
I know.
And what's-
There is hearing along, but this Thursday too.
How about the eleventh then?
I think the eleventh.
So we'll do that on the eleventh? So we don't, we have some time.
So I was right after.
Was that December eleventh?
Yeah. Okay, so thank you for that. And let's see, so, okay, we have nothing else there. Commissioner updates at this point.
Well, I have, I have one thing, and I don't know if this should fully follow my mind, consent agenda or other commissioner updates, so I'll bring it, bring it up now. The commissioners have probably all heard about smart metering and what's going on in a lot of the counties that utilities are provided by best-own, owned utilities as far as opt-out charges for, if you opt out of a smart meter and the health problems with smart metering and with smart meters, dark interference. What I'd like to do is probably sometime in January is to be able to have a, one of our work sessions, have somebody coming in from Korea or somebody and actually do a presentation to the board on smart meters. I know Josephine County now has something in court, Jackson County is looking how they're going to overturn theirs, because you get a smart meter by default, but what the OPUC put into the rules is that if you, they put one in by default, but if you don't like the smart meter, you have to opt out, and it costs you like four hundred and some dollars just to opt out when you've never had a chance to opt in. So this is a rule that OP, OPUC may accord with the smart meter. So I'd like to get something, maybe in January, just a work session for an hour and a half, or have somebody, expert in the field, come in and talk to us about smart metering.
And I think it's important to know, I know from personal experience, I've tried to opt out, and it's the, the price per month is exorbitant to where they make it so that not only do they put one in without your approval, but then they require you, should you complain about it, to, to pay an exorbitant amount per month, which you didn't pay when there was no smart meter. So the health implications, some of the concerns about sort of the big brother aspect of this, and the, and all of that in terms of, of privacy issues. But I think if we're going to have people come, we should have people come who are going to address the, the health implications, some of the data around that, and also the privacy implications. So we're not, so we're going to get-